Good morning. I now call to order the July 21, 2022 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Clerk to the Board, Tony Mayernick; County Council, Stephen Maccord; Commissioners Fisher and Schrader are attending the National Association of Counties Annual Conference in Colorado, so will not be present today. With that, roll call. Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Before we begin with the scheduled agenda, I understand H3S Staff is here to give us a brief update on cooling shelters in Clackamas County. Gary, would you please tee this up?
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. The temperatures have been around 90 degrees so far and will be over 100 degrees all of next week, so we want to share with you quickly what the county is doing for cooling centers throughout the county. Teresa Christopherson is from Health, Housing, and Human Services and will provide a quick update. Please go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you very much for allowing me to join you today, and I look forward to giving you an update on some of the work that we're doing right now. Teresa Christopherson, the Administrative Services Manager for the Social Services Division. I'm here to provide a brief update of the preparations that the Department of Health, Housing, and Human Services in partnership with disaster management is putting in place to address the upcoming heat event. Social Services maintains a list online of cooling centers throughout the county. The list can be found at the county's clackamas.us website. The list of sites will be updated on a daily basis as locations notify us of their ability to open. They include community centers, senior centers, libraries, and they are open to the general public. If anyone has any transportation needs to be able to access a site, please contact your local transit provider for assistance, or you can also call 211. Our houseless outreach specialists are currently working to identify vulnerable persons, connect them with cooling centers nearby and other resources, and provide them with water and other provisions to ensure that they can remain safe during this heat event. Highly vulnerable houseless individuals can also be placed temporarily in hotel shelters for the duration of the heat wave. We have successfully used this model for addressing the needs of medically vulnerable individuals during other weather events, including cold and smoke. For ongoing plans, the county website will be updated to include many locations where county residents can get relief during the heat. We do maintain several communications lists so we can reach out to different partners and agencies throughout the county and make sure that they have the most updated information available to them. Finally, we will be having a meeting on Monday to make sure that our plans are in place and that everybody has the information that they need to be able to assist folks in our communities. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Teresa. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
No, thank you very much.
Seen none, thank you for coming forward. I know I at least got one wee mail that announced what we're doing, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Teresa.
I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board. Gary, can you introduce the first?
Yes, Chair. So this is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. First, Housing Commissioner Ann Lindstrom is joining you. She is on Zoom. Ann, are you there?
I'm here. Good morning.
Great, welcome. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent Agenda for the Housing Authority, there are five items. Item one, approval of an infrastructure and additional cost, shared cost agreement with Clackamas Workforce Partnership for the Workforce Clackamas Center. Agreement value is $275.39 for one year. Funding is through Ross Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an amendment increasing funding to the intergovernmental agreement with Metro for the Affordable Housing Bond Measure Program. Amendment value is $25,967. For the purchase of software to report workforce demographics on bond-funded projects, agreement value is increased to $115,180,061. Funding is through regional Metro Housing Bond Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a personal services contract with Northwest Family Services to provide emergency shelter services and an assignment of that contract to Clackamas County. Contract value not to exceed $437,087 for one year. Funding through Supportive Housing Services. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro and the city of Lake Oswego to conduct a solicitation and selection process for awarding the Boons Ferry Project to an affordable housing developer. Anticipated award value is $7,150,000. Funding is through Metro Housing Bond Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of a contract with Nomarco Incorporated for the modernization of 22010 Leslie Project. Contract value is $247,000. Funding is through HUD Capital Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item from this particular agenda? Seen none. Ann, would you like to make a motion?
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda as read by the clerk.
Second.
Commissioner Lindstrom has moved that we approve this agenda. It's been seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? Seen none. Tony, can you take the poll?
Commissioner Lindstrom.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much, Commissioners and Ann, for participating in this.
You're welcome.
I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next, Chair, you have three public hearings. The first public hearing is approval of annexation to Sunrise Water Authority, CL 21-012. Ken Martin is the county's Boundary Consultant. He will give a quick update. Go ahead, please, Ken.
Welcome, Ken.
Thank you. This is an annexation to the Sunrise Water Authority. It's a one-and-a-half-acre piece. Folks that own this piece of property need water because they want to put in a small ADU, and they've already checked on that. The district has water available, and we'd recommend approval.
Have you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take the first in-person testimony. Seen none. Tony, do we have anybody online?
At this time, if you would like to provide public comment on this particular public hearing, please use the Raise Hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
I will now close the hearing for public testimony, and I will entertain a motion if there's no further discussion on this.
I move we approve the board order approving the boundary change proposal, CL 21-012, and annexing the identified territory to the Sunrise Water Authority.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved that we approve the board order for the boundary change for Sunrise Water Authority. Commissioner Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seen none. Tony, can you please take the poll?
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
Next public hearing is approval of annexation to Sunrise Water Authority, CL 22-001. Ken, go ahead.
This is an annexation to the Water Authority, which is a fairly large piece, 36 acres. It is within the city of Happy Valley. It's been approved by them for 137-unit development. The district has an 18-inch line adjacent at 172nd, and we'd recommend approval.
Do Commissioners have any questions or comments on this? Seen none. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I'll take the first in-person testimony. Seen none. Tony, do we have anybody on Zoom?
If you would like to provide public comment on this hearing, please use the Raise Hand feature at this time. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Seen none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order approving the boundary change proposal, CL 22-001, annexing the identified territory to the Sunrise Water Authority.
Seconded.
Commissioner Savis has moved we approve a boundary change annexing into the Sunrise Water Authority. Commissioner Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seen none. Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Thank you, Ken, for coming forward today. Gary, what's next?
The next public hearing is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 03-2022. An ordinance amending Chapter 2.07 Compliance Hearings Officer, amending Appendix B Fines, amending Chapter 2.09 County Administrator, amending Chapter 6.08 Chronic Nuisance, adding Chapter 6.13 Exclusion of Persons from County Buildings and Property, and amending various chapters of the Clackamas County Code to eliminate bias and gender specificity, and declaring an emergency. Jeff Muntz is Assistant County Counsel and will present. Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. Morning Commissioners and Chair Smith. This matter, we had a policy session in June, and then we had the first reading of this ordinance last week. Since this was submitted, the proposed changes to Chapter 603 have been withdrawn, and so I just wanted to note that in the ordinance, the enabling ordinance, the paragraph dealing with Chapter 603 should be stricken, as well as in the attachment, pages 181 to 184 should be withdrawn because those concern Chapter 603. And besides that, I would just say if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer regarding the other proposed changes that are largely housekeeping-type changes, as well as making the changes for gender neutrality after our bias review that was conducted by our office, as well as Office of Equity Inclusion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. As a matter of fact, this was a very hard lift for many people, many staff people in the county, to go through all of our ordinances and ZDOs. And how long did that process take?
Our office took a couple of months to go through that.
How many?
A couple of months for Scott Seaco and myself and Anya Monday in our office to go through all the different chapters, as well as work with the different departments that implement those chapters and get their opinions and suggestions on some changes to their code sections, as well as asking about any problems that they were seeing that we could also address at the same time. Other changes that are here were for code enforcement, for instance. There was several months back and forth working with them on the proposed changes. So we're doing this all at one time because just to get it all changed and updated that. But it's been quite a bit of work for everybody involved, but it's good to have these changes ready to go. And also, this enables this to be adopted as an emergency, as a second reading. Now, you don't need to read it in full, thankfully, since we're doing it in two readings because it's about 500 pages, obviously. That way, these changes would be implemented immediately.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, I was unable to be here on June 15th at the first hearing when part of the things that are being withdrawn were submitted, I guess. So I just want clarification because in the packet, which pretty well reads exactly what I have here in print that I got a week ago, there's language in here. I'll just read part of it. You know, "Such event shall include, but not limited to, fire, explosion, flood, severe..." This is under 603020 definition of an emergency. So it talks about all the different emergencies, and then, comma, "malfeasance in office or willful or wanton neglect of duty of a county public official or the inability of a county public official to perform duties in a timely or competent manner." And I just want to understand if the definition, what was the definition of a county public official? Is that an elected official?
A county public official, that term is broader than an elected official. It would be anybody serving for the county, as well as elected officials. So it's a broader term than limited to elected officials. And this is, of course, in Chapter 603, which has been withdrawn for consideration at this time, and that this item, I understand, would be coming back to the Board for a future policy session or further discussion, but not something that would be changed today. And those portions are being withdrawn and stricken from the enabling ordinance for just Chapter 603.
Okay, so just for clarification, so a county public official is or is not an elected official?
Is.
Is, okay, thank you.
A public official could also be anybody working for the county.
Okay, that makes sense. So when you say 603, is the entire, all the, the entire chapter 6.03 withdrawn for today's consideration?
Any proposed changes would be withdrawn. Of course, Chapter 603, as it's currently enacted, would remain, which doesn't include this changed language. But the changes that have been proposed in this packet are withdrawn for today, and then that portion stricken from the enabling ordinance.
Okay, and the changes you identify that are being withdrawn are essentially what's in red in the packet today?
Right, and then also the pages 181 and 184 in the packet, which would be that portion of Exhibit A that would be then the portion to be enacted and changed.
Yeah, my comment is, you know, as far as elected officials, and we've got a few in Clackamas County that are elected, that are independent of the county commission, the elected sheriff, the elections clerk, the tax assessor, and I believe one of our judges. Actually, all of our, most of our judges are. The treasurer as well, yes. And, you know, I guess probably the one that sticks out to me in my 20-some-odd years of public service that I think is probably most important to the integrity of this country is really elections, that elections be independent. And I believe it was 1974, I think, or 1964, when the federal government made, separated the elections operations into the FEC, which was an independent organization, not one of the three branches of the federal government. And I think it's important that the political, Clackamas County or our role here as Commissioners is, we're defined as a political subdivision of the state. And I think elections always needs to be somewhat held in a sacred fashion in that there is no political influence allowed at any particular time because, you know, malfeasance in office is a definition which, you know, I think people can interpret differently. So I just, I just want to make sure that anything related to any of the public offices, the sheriff, all those in particular are in any future discussion. I know they're off the table today, but any future discussions are not part of this. Elected officials that are elected, you know, should not be under our control in essence or under our ability to declare a malfeasance or whatnot. I just struggle with that, and I do know that I've heard from not all of elected officials, but I've heard from several, as well as citizens, we got emails on this. And so I concur with a lot of those concerns, and I look forward to future discussion. I just want to put that out there, that we just make sure that, you know, politics does not interfere with those particular elected offices, which are granted by the state and our constitution. Thank you.
What is the legal definition of malfeasance?
Well, in this, we pulled this discussion or this phrase out of some of the tort claim language, as well as just really, that's more of a term that would be defined by a dictionary. What is malfeasance? Not properly performing duties, for instance, not holding up your obligations of your office, potentially. So it's pretty broad.
And directly, it has to do with elected officials, correct?
Well, this, of course, we use the term "public official," not "elected official" alone in this draft. And I think that goes forward with any discussion on this item, that our office remains, you know, here to assist with the proper wording and so on, whatever the decision is.
I believe the reason why this situation arose is because of the overwhelming cry and emails that I have received, phone calls, and personal comments regarding what happened with our elections. What happened with our elections, yes, it was a printing error. However, decisions could have been made to avert the necessity of spending over 6,000 employee hours and almost $600,000 if the clerk had acted sooner. She is an independently elected official. We encouraged her to do that. She refused. That's why this came forward in response to that. Also, there was a cry, "Well, why don't county commissioners do something about this?" And my response was, "She is an independently elected official. She makes her own decisions." But you should be able to do something. It says, "We're a statutory county. We are not a home rule county, and since then, there has been cries that we become a home rule county." I believe that suggestions, and I'm putting that mildly, is coming at us. I have defended Clackamas County as a statutory county since statehood. We are the oldest county in Clackamas County. If we were to go to the home rule and have a charter like some of the other counties have in Oregon, the elections official would not be an elected position. It would become under the administration of the county commission. In fact, we could have all of our independently elected officials under the county commission. I am not in favor of that. I do think they should be elected. However, I do believe in extreme cases of emergency, there could be a time in the future where something like this would be helpful to manage us out of a crisis situation. Now, I am not one that would readily go in and assume a crisis situation because, Commissioners, that means we would own it. We would take responsibility for that. I don't want to be responsible for all that happened in the elections office. We merely assisted the clerk and offered our help with a lot of employee hours and a lot of money. I hope for the future it never happens again. We have also offered her up our procurement office to secure a new printer, which I believe she has done. We've also offered up, we could buy all new machines, scanning machines, vote counting machines, anything she wanted. So it's really up to her. And this is in response to an overwhelming, I mean overwhelming, cry to do something. So that's why we see that today. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, so a couple things. First of all, Mr. Muntz, thank you for your definition or responding to the Chair's question about the definition of malfeasance. I think we have, you know, I think, you know, I guess if we really want to be, look at that broadly enough, and not that broad, but, you know, we've had some excursions when it comes to board management of our districts, for example. You know, significant numerous excursions there. So I hope that's not defined, or perhaps, at least what you responded, as perhaps malfeasance. But I think that we have to look and be broad-thinking about that. Granted, we've had cries over the years when a particular elected official, not just the elect others as well, to do something, but our, the framers of our constitution had some idea, a pretty good idea of what they were doing, and, you know, I think we had a pretty good structure in play here. So as to the other comment about the elections event here recently in particular, that, there was guidance given by the state and basically the overarching, at least within the state, the overarching authority above the county elections, essentially, there's a lot of responsibility that comes with the Oregon Secretary of State in those circumstances. And the Oregon Secretary of State did issue guidance as to how to respond to the ballot issue. That guidance was followed. I really thought that, well, I think there's some dual responsibility there for that because I think it was underestimated as to the degree of work it would take to get that done. Anyhow, a lot of discussion, and I do recognize a lot of people wanted to see some kind of action. I think there's some structures in place that essentially would take care of most of these circumstances, but I think it's more important to protect the sanctity of the office than it is for those unusual circumstances. In this case, frankly, a printing error, which is really not really something that was actually performed by the clerk or the Secretary of State. So coming out of that event, I've suggested, and I have talked to, including the clerk, talked to the clerk about having an independent after-action review done by an independent agency. I think the clerk indicated she was willing. I've mentioned this to some of my colleagues, but I'm not sure. Administrator Schmidt, is there any traction on that, any seeking an independent review by an outside agency?
Clerk Sherry Hall will be coming before you in August to give you an update on her internal after-action, and at that point, would that be a good time to ask her her plans going forward?
All right, thank you. I think it'd be a good, I think it'd be a good idea to assess that. I know that across this country right now, there's a lot of concern about our elections. I think we need to be above board, be seen as being above board in responding to these matters. So that's what I have for today, I guess, on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Scholl.
The removal of the modification to Paragraph 6.03 was done pursuant to a lot of dialogue, a lot of discussion in this building, and also with constituents across the county. It was a, it was an initiative to look at possibilities on how we could preclude problems like what happened in the clerk's office prior to the primary. But it's been removed for today. I believe that the people of the county will approve the amendments to the Clackamas County Code that we have that remain for approval today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. I will entertain a motion from Commissioners at this point.
Point of order, Chair.
Public hearing.
Yes, we do need to go.
You want to open the public hearing?
We do. Thank you, Commissioner, I mean, excuse me, for Stephen Maccord. I will open a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the room in person wanting to testify? Seen none. Tony, do we have anybody online?
If you would like to provide public comment on this hearing, please use the Raise Hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing, ask if there is any further discussion. Seen none, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve an ordinance amending Chapter 2.07 Compliance Hearings Officer, amending Appendix B Fines, amending Chapter 2.09 County Administrator, amending Chapter 6.08 Chronic Nuisance, adding Chapter 6.13 Exclusion of Persons from County Buildings and Property, and amending various chapters of the Clackamas County Code to eliminate bias and gender specificity and declaring an emergency.
Commissioner Scholl has moved this motion, which I am not going to repeat. He said it accurately. And Commissioner Savis has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? I will just add this as something for somebody to think about. As elected officials, we are not judged by the emergencies we encounter. However, we are judged by how we react to them and manage them. Just food for thought. Tony, take the poll.
Madam Chair, for clarity, counsel has requested that I read the ordinance by title only.
That's after they pass that you can read it by title only.
Understood. Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes three, zero. Tony, now it's your turn.
Ordinance 03, 2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 2.07 Compliance Hearing Officer, amending Appendix B fines, amending Chapter 2.09 County Administrator, amending Chapter 6.08 Chronic Nuisance, adding Chapter 6.13 Exclusions of Persons from County Buildings and Property, and amending various chapters of the Clackamas County Code to eliminate bias and gender specificity and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Anything else, Stephen Magcor?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, commissioners. Gary, what's up next? And thank you, Jeff, for coming forward, explaining all that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next chair is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
This is the consent agenda for Clackamas County. Elected officials, approval of July 14, 2022 Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval of an amendment modifying the billing rates of an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County to provide maintenance services to motorcycles owned and operated by Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Amendment value is estimated at $1,000 per year. Projected annual expense is now estimated at $12,500 per year. Annual funding is through budgeted county general funds, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. County Council, item one, approval of a board order for a zone map amendment related to file Z 0439-21-Z, removing the historic landmark zoning overlay on 20750 South Beaver Creek Road in Oregon City. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a revised amendment to the library construction and operation intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the city of Gladstone. This amendment extends the duration for construction completion by 12 months with no change to the agreement value. Finance, item one, approval of a resolution adopting a debt management policy, no fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Technology Services, item one, adoption of a board order approving the issuance of a purchase order to purchase networking equipment to expand broadband access to unserved and underserved areas of Clackamas County. Purchase order value is $750,676.86. Funding is through the County American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated for broadband expansion. No county general funds are involved. Disaster Management, item one, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of the 2020 Urban Security Area, Urban Area Security Initiative Subrecipient Agreement with the city of Portland. Amendment value is $4,691. Agreement value is increased to $380,524. Funding through U.S. Department of Homeland Security. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, item one, approval of a supplemental project agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Clackamas County Regional Advanced Traffic Controller and Signal Optimization Project. Agreement value is $820,103. Funding is through federal funds and county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a goods and services contract with Tyree Oil Incorporated for fleet fuel and fuel services. Contract value not to exceed $18 million for nine years. Funding is through fleet services funds. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a resolution consenting to the boundary change of the Malala Enterprise Zone. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Health Housing and Human Services, item one, approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with Outside In for HIV testing and counseling services. Grant value not to exceed $28,432 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with Cascade AIDS Project for HIV Testing and Counseling Services. Grant value not to exceed $75,000 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an amendment extending the duration and increasing the rent amount of a lease agreement with North Clackamas School District for the Wichita Community Services Building, Housing Women, Infants and Children Clinic Services. Amendment value is $10,583.04 for one year. Total lease value is now $15,575.04 for 18 months. Funding is provided by WIC grant funds. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement with Todos Santos to provide evidence-based parenting classes to families in rural Clackamas County. Grant value not to exceed $54,740 for 11 months. Funding is through Oregon State University and Oregon Parenting Education Collaborative Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services to provide evidence-based parenting education classes in Clackamas County. Grant value not to exceed $31,133.54 for 11 months. Funding is through Oregon State Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item six, approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement with Ant Farm Incorporated to provide evidence-based Spanish parenting education classes in rural Clackamas County. Grant value not to exceed $9,500 for 11 months. Funding is through Oregon State University Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item seven, approval to apply for funding opportunity with Clackamas Work First Partnership for Clean Slate Expungement Clinics to Increase Employment Services in Clackamas County. Grant value is $40,000 for one year. Funding is through Clackamas Work First Partnership. No county general funds are involved. Item eight, approval of a federal subrecipient grant agreement with Ant Farm Incorporated for rent assistance services. Grant value is $2,804,942 for 20 months. Funding is through state American Rescue Plan Act rental, emergency rental assistance funds. No county general funds are involved. Item nine, approval of an assignment from the Housing Authority of Clackamas County of a personal services contract with Northwest Family Services to provide emergency shelter services. Assignment has no fiscal value. Agreement value remains at $437,087 for one year. Funding through supportive housing services. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tony, for that lengthy consent agenda. And here I thought at the end of the fiscal year, we wouldn't get a long one, but gee, we've been surprised now. Commissioners, does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw, for moving the consent agenda, and Commissioner Savas for the second motion on that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Sav, Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes three, zero. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water Environment Services Board. Gary.
Next is the consent agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services, multiple items. Item one, approval of a public improvement contract, Goodfellow Brothers LLC, for the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility Fill Removal Project. Contract value is $662,500. Funding is through West Capital Improvement Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a goods and services contract with Polydine Incorporated for the delivery of water treatment polymer products. Contract value is $4,995,000 for five years. Funding is through West Operating Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an amendment extending the duration and modifying the scope of work of a personal services contract with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated for the Kellogg Creek Water Resource Recovery Facility Aeration Improvements. Amendment value is $771,960. Contract value is increased to $1,038,642. Funding is through West Capital Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of an amendment modifying the scope of work of a personal services contract with Murray Smith Incorporated for Pump Station Rehabilitation and Upgrades Project for the Bolton Pump Station and the Group One River Street Clackamas and Timberline Rim Pump Stations. Amendment value is $347,762. Contract value is now $2,479,468. Funding goes through West Capital Improvement Funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any commissioner wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
No, Chair, I do have a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
And a question, I guess, you know, this, there's rare, very rare opportunities to, as a member of the Water Environmental Services, as a voting member, a board member, to even comment or ask any questions. So I just suggest maybe that we get some kind of a regular programming in which we convene, so some simple questions can be answered. The one question I have for today, I'll just limit it at that, is that Administrator Schmidt, who is, on, when we sign these contracts, who's actually signing these contracts?
Mostly the chair, unless the, the request is that it be subdelegated to a department director or myself. But the majority are Chair Smith signing them.
Okay. Is there a, an amount of money that requires a board action or a signature by the chair?
Anything over $150,000 is signed by the board, unless I believe there's some construction projects, though, with West, Stephen, that there is signing authority for the director?
There is with West and with you as well, Gary. I think it's still 150. I think it pertains to the amendment amount.
Okay, got it.
It's, it's 10% or less, and I think West says 10% or, or greater. I can't recall the specific language offhand. I could find it, though. But typically, it goes to the board. Anything over 150 goes to the chair, goes to the board for approval on consent agenda.
Right. And if I may, just one other question. So West is a ORS 190 made up of three special districts, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So that anything that a district's subject to under ORS 198 or any other state statute is, is subject to, the West, the 190, is subject to the same requirements and standards, public meetings, notice, so on and so forth. Is that correct?
When this board is meeting as the Board of Water Environment Services, is what you're saying?
No, at any time, at any time. West is subject to the same requirements, statutes, as any special district would, correct?
I think you're, I can't say that for sure. No, no, West is a 190, and when you say West, are you talking about the department or are you talking about you yourself as a board?
Well, both.
No, I mean, West is a department, doesn't need to post public meetings all the time.
I'm not sure it's a department.
It, I don't know what your question is, Paul.
Yeah, anyhow, I think that actually makes my case. I think we need some clarification on that at a future work session, is really what West is.
So if you want a work session on that, Commissioner Savas, I suggest you submit your questions in writing beforehand, so we know what we're going to have and the issues on it. We'll go to issues before it ever sees a work session, because the entire Board of Commissioners, but we need to know exactly what the issue is that you would like to discuss, so please submit those in writing. Any other discussion on this? And did we, we need to entertain a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
For Water.
For Water Environment Services.
Second.
Commissioner Savas has moved for approval of the Water and Environment Services consent agenda. Commissioner Shaw has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes three, zero. I will now adjourn as a Water and Environment Service Board and convene as the Development Agency Board. Gary, what's next?
Next is the consent agenda for the Clackamas County Development Agency. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Development Agency has one item, approval of a board order and commercial lease of development agency property to W.E. Given Contracting Incorporated. Lease value is $1,320 for one year. Funding is through LSE rental payments. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Does any commissioner wish to remove an item? Seeing none. I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Shaw has moved for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda. Commissioner Savas has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes three, zero. I will now adjourn as a Development Agency Board and convene as a Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of this meeting. Next up is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the time of this business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Tony, do we have any?
If there is anyone who would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received.
I know in-person testimony.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Also, I have a note here, if, if there's a Hamlet of Malino representative online, she is not online today. Okay, thank you very much, Tony. Please proceed.
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting. Stephen.
I just wanted to clarify for the board's edification that for West's contract signing authority, if it's a public improvement project, for an amendment, it's 10% of the original contract or 150,000, whichever is greater. And for everybody else, it's 10% or 150, whichever is less, just for clarification, for contract signing authority.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Gary, can you introduce the next item?
Yes, next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to share good news of what we do here at Clackamas County. Today, I'd like to share that the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association has named Clackamas Water Environment Services winner of the 2022 Sustainability Award. This award was given to West in honor of its solids handling improvements project, which ensures reliable, energy-efficient and affordable wastewater treatment services for generations to come. This project includes a new cogeneration system that transforms organic waste into renewable energy, which will help Clackamas County reach its goal to become carbon neutral by 2050. So thank you to our West team for their good work, and thank you to the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association for recognizing our agency. Next, Clackamas County Public Health and its regional partners have started a widespread English and Spanish language promotional effort about the services and resources available through our Women, Infants and Children, or WIC, program. WIC is a critical program that provides supplemental foods, healthcare referrals, nutrition education for low-income, pregnant, breastfeeding and non-breastfeeding postpartum women, and to children found to be at nutritional risk. Clackamas, Washington and Multnomah Counties launched this effort in June across social media, television and radio. This effort is especially important, given that grocery prices have gone up 12% over the last year. Finally, I want to share a note that Jackie Betts, who's the city administrator of Gladstone, shared with us after she attended the Tuckwillis Springs grand opening a few weeks ago. This is, of course, as you know, our new affordable housing community with 48 apartments in Gladstone. Jackie wrote, "We want to thank you for a very professional press conference and event. This was a great project for all partners, and we are grateful for the county's support." So thank you, Jackie, for that note. Thank you to our health, our Health Housing Human Services and our Housing Authority of Clackamas County, and our Public and Government Affairs Team, and you commissioners for helping plan that event. That is my update. Thank you.
Gary, that's wonderful news. I like it when we hear from the folks out there. Now we will move on to Commissioner Communication. First, Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, thank you. We cut our comments short last week because of the long meeting we had last Thursday. Lots going on, once again, in transportation. Tomorrow, we will be, or ODOT will be having a groundbreaking for the I-205 construction project. Glad to see that that construction project is moving forward. Unfortunately, tied to that project is a proposal or a tolling, a tolling project, there's two projects, really. And they have made some changes along the way. We had a very interesting meeting with our Clackamas County C4 Courtney Committee Diversion, Diversion Committee, with, 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 really made up the cities of Westland, Oregon City, Camby, Gladstone, should they choose, and, and the county. And we had a presentation by ODOT staff on some of the proposals and the measurements and questions along the way with the traffic study that they've done, which evaluated the periods from 2015 to 2027, and how tolling might impact diversion on our might impact diversion on our local streets. The impacts from the June 15 meeting, which are, clearly indicate that there are significant impacts in some areas, and in some areas, not so much, but the question is, who that, who those improvements or needs or infrastructure requirements is responsible for that? Is it going to be the state of Oregon, or is it going to be the local jurisdictions? And some of those, some of those infrastructure improvements or impacts are directly unincorporated, and that really means that, really essentially, that that's going to put an extra strain on every, every available dollar, gas tax dollar, vehicle registration dollar, any means in which roads are funded in the state of Oregon. So that'll be challenging. I tried to make the point yesterday that the, the start date for that analysis of 2015 is really not a fair one, because I-205 was essentially failing from a traffic flow standpoint at peak hours well before 2015, and to assess that the intersections were failing then, I agree, or near failure then, I agree, which is ODOT's assessment, but who's responsible for that? In part, frankly, is the fact that when people are diverting, because the freeway's plugged up in 2015, less so in 2010, less so in 2007, that that's a responsibility more of the state, in my, in my humble opinion. Anyhow, there's a lot of moving pieces with this. Again, I'm glad to see that the project's moving forward. Anyone driving by in the area can see that there's a construction project taking place on both sides of the river to replace the bridge, to make it, not replace it, but upgrade it, to make it seismically sound, and to widen it a lane each way with some safety features that will change some of the on-ramps, off-ramps, in a way that is, will hopefully lessen some of the safety issues that have resulted in accidents and deaths along the way. This Tuesday, we had a little bit of a discussion, and I think perhaps a little bit of confusion as to what, what we did on May 5th, it's a May 5th, May 10th of 2020, or 2021, in regard to our, the vote, Board's vote to support HB 3055. That's what it was, and I appreciate Chair Smith and her comments to ODOT subsequent to that meeting. I think really did accurately represent our concerns and the position of the county. But I did want to clarify for some of the folks that were watching, and a couple that reached out to me asking for clarification, that that's what that emergency meeting was all about on that particular day, and I'm sorry if I can't remember if it was May 5th or May 10th. I believe it was May 5th. But that's what I have for today, Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. Also, on tolling, good government requires the input of the people, and Salem has extended the deadline for input to the draft amendment to the Oregon Highway Plan that will guide the state in using tolling as a way to raise funds for transportation system improvements. The Oregon Highway Plan Policy Amendment Draft for Public Review can be found on oregon.gov. Again, the deadline for your comments has been extended from 1 August to 15 September. The Oregon Highway Plan has an existing policy section on tolling. This draft policy amendment proposes an update to the section that is Goal Number Six on tolling. The draft amendment is intended to modernize the state's pricing and tolling policy. But also, on tolling, I want to bring to your attention a proposed constitutional amendment to the Oregon Constitution from the voter, a vote before tolls committee. It is the Initiative Petition IP 2024-04, which is a constitutional amendment that if passed, would make it mandatory that tolling has to be approved by a vote of the people in order for tolling to take place anywhere in the state of Oregon. Please take a moment and read about it on the Secretary of State of Oregon's website under Elections. Again, you're going to contact the Vote Before Tolls Committee for more information, or give me an email, I'd be happy to talk to anybody about it concerning your questions. Commissioner Savis has spoken about some of the impacts of tolling, and I, again, encourage every citizen in the county to become aware of what's happening with this tolling issue. A reminder that on Law and Order tonight at 6:30, the county sheriff will hold a meeting on enhanced law enforcement districts at the Sunday Brook Building, but you can also join us on Zoom. See that Zoom link under the sheriff's website. Couple of fun things, we got to have some fun this summer. The Bigfoot Festival comes to Clackamas County Fairgrounds on 30 July. On 9 August, I hope you can enjoy, join us at the Boring and Dull Days in Boring. Parade begins at 4:45, social at 5 to 8:30 at the Boring Station Trailhead, and that's always a fun time, and be ready to eat lots of free ice cream. Moms and dads, the Clackamas County Fair is August 16 through 20. Please put that in your schedule, get the kids out there to have a good time. You heard from the staff here this morning already on the upcoming heat condition, and I encourage everybody to look at the Clackamas website to get the information on where those are and what the points of contact are. Finally, this morning, we had an update from the U.S. Forest Service. The wildfire risk map shows the areas of Clackamas County that are currently in extreme risk. We can expect that this is going to get worse by the end of next week, so I encourage everybody who's getting out camping this weekend to be very, very careful. The extreme risk area on the map right now goes from up towards the Roderndenran Government Camp area and south, all the way to the southern border of our county. So be very aware and be very safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Yes, tomorrow's a groundbreaking of the Abernathy Bridge, a retrofit for seismic event, and as you can see, there's a lot of cranes down there. There's this big barge on the river with this huge crane that goes up, and for anybody in, coming from the construction area, I find that stuff fascinating, how they're able to do this with, it seems like it's old school, but it's very technologically savvy. And that's tomorrow at 10 a.m. at Clackamas Park, and commissioners, I'm sure you will be there. Also today, I'm hosting the Chair and Mayor's Meeting for all Clackamas County mayors are invited to talk about our issues that we share in the county, and I'm always open to suggestions. Last night, I attended the Clackamas County Fair Board Meeting, their monthly meeting, and as you know, they're getting geared up for the fair. I'm happy to report that all vendors and booths have been sold out, so they are really doing well. They have a new executive director, and he's, he's making some changes, which I think we'd all find really, really good. That was great. And Gary, the Fair Board members were extremely appreciative of the $40,000 gas cards for rodeo contestants, and that came from two departments, I understand. Would you like to mention those?
Yes, so this is a request of, the executive director came to me directly and asked about this, and this is within my signing authority, so yes, the, our Economic Development Division using lottery dollars, and our Tourism and Cultural Affairs Department using transient room tax have agreed to split the cost evenly for a total of $40,000 to give to the Fair Board for purposes of gas cards for the rodeo participants, because without the rodeo participants, the county fair is not the county fair. So this is a way to help support the fair and our community with this very important economic development activity. So yes.
And how this came about is, I was at a meeting the month prior, and it's the Chair of, and they're basically cowboys, and they go around to different rodeos and fairs, and he's been talking to a lot of participants to try to make sure talent comes to our Clackamas County Fair. Well, the big objection is traveling across states, across state in these pickups and these horse trailers, and the high cost of diesel on most of these pickups, and so they, some are saying, mm, by the time I drive and I spend my night there, and I pay for my gas and, and my entry fee, whether I win any prize money, that, they just do it, a lot of it, they're professionals, but they do it for the enjoyment as well. So they're just kind of trying to prime the pump. They did say last night that they will not get reimbursement for gas unless they participate. So that's, that's, yeah, they may be cowboys, but they're smart with their money, yes. Also, House Bill 5006, where the legislature has allocated $10 million for capital construction costs for any fairs across the county, our county will be receiving $277,000 and change, and it's being divided up equally between all 36 counties in Oregon. And lastly, I talked about the Hair Festival at the county grounds. Well, that was started from the Wild Hair Restaurant over in Cambie, who now has the second location in Oregon City. And what they did is they opened up their parking lot, they have a very big parking lot, and they brought in all these bands to play, and they were the bands that, you know, the, the upfront bands for all the very famous ones, and they outgrew their location, so they said, let's put it over at the fairground. Well, it was such a huge hit this year that the Hair Festival has now organized itself as its own entity, and they will just be contract tracking out the county fairgrounds and run their own event. And the new fair director has decided to go that route because it's less liability on the fair board in general and their employees. So it's a set amount of money, they provide all the insurance, the Hair Festival provides all the insurance, the risk, the security, and cleanup, and it's a good income for them, too. That's about all I have to report. They're excited for the fair. Everybody, please go. It starts August 17, runs through the weekend, August 16, runs through the weekend. This board will be participating in the Kickoff Kitties Parade. We will end at the fairgrounds, have our opening ceremonies, and then let's celebrate, all righty? Seeing no important business before this commission, we are adjourned.